And, um, Mr. Carpenter is out today. So we'll go through the agenda items. First one is adopting the minutes from the last council meeting. Thank you Stacy, our clerk for putting those together. Any comments on that? All right, we also had the minutes of the public hearing from eight five as well, which were easy minutes to do. And the next one, sponsored by Mayor Sankwani, is a resolution approving contract with Ambient Environmental, Inc. And I think, is it hard, did we have Dan Gray for this, or?
This was the grant. Dan, if you, this is the grant we got from, uh, to demolish the twenty-three buildings in our city. And this is a resolution, or a air monitoring company to do the demolitions. This is all funded by that grant.
They're doing the demo, or they're monitoring the air while someone else does it?
These people will be monitoring the air. I believe that's what this is for.
Wow, someone else does the demo? Well, that's a good thing.
How much is it?
We've got a million dollar grant. We'll end up spending about nine hundred thousand dollars of that, uh, nine hundred and some thousand dollars of that on demolition and air monitoring. We are hoping that we can do all twenty-three for that amount of money. However, there's a chance we won't. So we're bidding at my rate, the same way you did the road program. So that will go down the list until, until we run out of money. Hopefully, we won't, but we'll see.
We need someone to move this one.
So we're going, this is going to go out to bid?
Uh, the contract, right, is going out to bid. Is it out to bid, Mike?
No.
Not yet, we're, we're, still gotta get, uh, comments back from the HCR on that. This was already, this is a professional service for the environmental monitoring. And I believe Nick put out an RFP, Nick Zabowski, and we received eight or ten, uh, proposers. And if I remember correctly, this is an hourly contract.
But how much, what is the rate? It doesn't say what the rate is.
Yeah, do we have a contract?
There is no amount in this.
It's probably gonna depend on the demolition.
I'm sorry?
Generally speaking, depends on the demolition and what happens with the demolition. It's gonna be tied to what demolition contract ends up doing.
So? So each house could have a different rate?
It's possible, yeah, it depends who has to be there for that time. I mean, I wasn't involved in that, but I just hope you're experienced.
Yeah, I don't think we have the contract attached to our.
I'm not sure how, if it was awarded on a per, on a contingency basis, or how much?
Or if it's a professional service, does it have to not be paid?
It's a professional service.
Yeah.
I could ask Nick, but.
I'll bet, uh, Nick sent them to me, I'm gonna find him right now.
Okay.
All right, we can go back, you wanna go back to this one?
Yeah.
We'll table that for now, then we, yeah, when Mike's ready for that, we'll go back to it. I'm happy to move it unless someone else wants to. Okay. Um, the next one is a resolution appointing Joseph F. McDermott to the Amsterdam Industrial Development Agency Board of Directors. Ada?
So I think we're going to be having an executive session to discuss this issue at the top of the meeting. Is that right, dear?
Yes, I'd like to do that.
Okay. So is after the public hearing, or the, um, public comment, we'll go into executive session?
Yes.
Okay. Can we still adopt the agenda as is, or should we do the session before the adoption?
Adopt the agenda as is, but for the caveat that there's a new introduction, uh, ordinance introduction for chapter one fifty-six ordinance. So when we go to adopt the agenda, I would ask that we make a motion to adopt the agenda, including the modification of the new introduction for chapter one fifty-six. While we're talking about that, we have a scheduled public hearing for, uh, chapter one fifty-six legislation that's on the agenda for tonight. If anyone is here to speak for that, I would recommend that we allow that public hearing to proceed. But I expect and anticipate that, that, that ordinance is going to be withdrawn and replaced with the new introduction tonight. And we're going to be scheduled with a public hearing on chapter one fifty-six legislation.
Okay. All right. I think I understood that. We'll go next to the resolution, uh, number thirty. Resolution in support of five corners and home leasing senior housing. We have a replacement for that? That is you. Yep, and, uh, the clerk printed out a new copy of that. It's on your desks, and that will be the one that we use. And I think that means you don't have to do the amendments. Is that correct? So he won't have to do the amendments, the corrections, so you'll be good. So if you look at the one on your desk, right here, Five Corners Leasing, wishes construct sixty-six affordable senior housing units at Edwards Street. And it's just a, basically saying that we support it, right? Anything else on that?
No. Nailed it.
Thanks. All right, so just ignore the one in the packet and use the one on your desk for that. Next, resolution thirty-one, authorizing agreement with CDT for universal access to CDT route network for city employees. This, um, is sponsored by me, and it's just a renewal from last year. We became, um, a, a universal access employer in all our city employees and council members, and everyone gets a bus pass. Next, number thirty-two, Sarah O'Neil Resolution, recognizing the thirty-fourth anniversary of Ukrainian Independence Day in the city of Amsterdam. Mayor?
Uh, yes, Ukrainian, uh, organization here in Amsterdam has, um, requested that we consider this resolution, which I wholeheartedly endorse. Um, and they were also asking that we permit them to raise a flag on our ceremonial flag pillow next door, which I've also, I'll also wholeheartedly endorse and ask the council to support.
Okay. Thank you. Um, and the resolution approving the audit. Alder Collins?
It's fine.
Okay. All right, so then we get to ordinance E, which we are going to pull tonight.
That's going to be withdrawn.
Withdrawn.
Expect that I just make a motion to withdraw ordinance E.
Mm-hmm. But we will still have the public hearing, um.
If no one shows up at the public hearing, then we'll just end it.
Yeah. Um, and then ordinance F. This ordinance E is gonna be regarding the residential commercial property owner registration. Do you wanna go over any of the changes in the new?
Uh, I think that the substantive change between the prior version and the updated version is the prior version implemented a deadline for implementation for twenty-twenty-five and a deadline for, uh, February first for each annual year afterwards. The substantive change is that there's going to be, uh, it's gonna be rolled up, it's gonna be rolling in perpetuity, so it's gonna be.
Would you cry to ask?
So it's gonna be, there's not gonna be a deadline, everyone's just gonna have to?
Rather than saying that it's going to be due on the first of the month, uh, which is going to be due twelve months from the time of establishment.
Okay, so everyone has their own timeline based on when they purchase?
So it'll be based on, on the date that the deed is transferred to a new owner?
And that won't be difficult in your system?
No.
Great. It'll probably be easier than getting, like, everyone all at the end of January?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so that's the, any other questions for Louise or anyone on that? If we get into that? All right, the next one is, um, ordinance F, modifying city code section two-two-eight-five-five, schedule eleven.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one. Loading zones, to add a loading zone space at the east side of Locust Avenue in front of three-seventeen Locust Avenue. Um, this is an ad, um, last meeting, we did the handicap one. And I think, for, for some good reasons, there were, there's some opposition to it. But I did talk to many people about perhaps a loading zone in order to assist this constituent, um, as they age and also need to get in that, so, into, um, their transportation. So are there any questions, or anything anyone wants to discuss on that? Okay. And I think I hear Mr. Marticello, there he is. Good timing, sir. I was just getting to ordinance G, regarding a stop sign on Bridge Street northbound at the intersection of Bridge Street and New York State Route thirty.
Yep, that's where you.
I thought it said Gilbrand.
When you come off the Bridge Street ramp, first ramp, coming off the bridge, there'll be a stop sign right here on your left. And the reason being, when you build the new boardwalk, traffic coming this way and going up the ramp, and there's people coming down the ramp, and there's pedestrians gonna be crossing. So they want a stop sign there, just to make sure all the traffic is stopped and congestion that intersection for the boardwalk.
Did this change in our packet? Cause I thought it said, like, Erie Terrace, Gilbrand, or whatever that?
Gilbrand.
Gillian's app?
That's the street that goes down, runs parallel to the boardwalk, right there. There's already a stop sign there.
Okay, so where are we putting the stops? There's not one at the bottom of the ramp?
Chief, go right ahead.
Yes, that currently as it stands in the code, that was a three-way stop intersection, and this will make it a true four-way stop, which I think is better for pedestrians and, you know, people who are traveling through, who they're most used to.
Sure. Okay.
Did this come from, like, the developer, or with the?
Uh, neighbor, neighbor complaint.
Came from Marilyn Sawyer, Marilyn Montanaro Sawyer. She and another woman asked me to look into it, and I did. And I asked the chief about it, and she said, makes sense, being that you have the pedestrian visual area, you have the boardwalk there, you have traffic coming down the ramp, coming traffic going up the ramp, it gets very congested there. As you all know, if you've been in Italian fest, you'll see where there's a lot of people in that area.
Okay.
Any other questions, concerns on that?
Thank you.
All right, so that, that, okay, anything, let's go back to the, um, air quality one, which.
Do we need to do this one?
Yeah, should we call that?
This is H, which is being added?
The last one.
Because we're taking out.
Yeah, we discussed, we did discuss that, though. Quickly, right? Yeah.
Just ordinance H is the introduction that's replacing ordinance.
Is five forty-five, okay.
Replacing E.
Can I ask what, what the discussion was on resolution twenty-nine?
What was it, Jim? Could you ask, Mayor?
Oh, and the Ada one?
Yes.
We're gonna have a second session.
Okay.
All right, so let's do that one public hearing, the first one for.
Ordinance E.
E, the registered agent?
The registered agent, we're pulling that, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so anyone like to speak on ordinance E? E, okay. E, I declared the public hearing open and closed.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so we're gonna, we're gonna jump back to twenty-eight, which is the resolution regarding Ambient Environmental, Inc. We had just had some questions about what the contract is for that one. This is the, uh, Mr. Marticello, this is the air quality portion of the demolition project.
Okay, I'm, uh, Mayor, I'm twenty-eight. You're gonna go back on that one?
Yep, we're just gonna talk over about, if we were, were, do we able to find anything on the contract?
I, I found, I, I can't open it, but I found that I don't have the, the robbery rates. There were eleven proposers.
There was no numbers in this, Jim, we're trying to find out. We had eleven people come, and not, I wouldn't consider it a bid, Mike, I'm not sure.
No, they, they submitted proposals.
They submitted proposals to do the air monitoring for the twenty-three demolitions. Uh, Nick, Nick Zabowski has recommended this one, but we don't know, uh, the amount of money. We're not sure how they presented it, because this is based upon, uh, an amount of money in a grant, that we don't know if we're gonna knock twenty-three down or not, so it's like a contingency bid.
I mean, I can go get it off of my, out of my office.
So we don't have an amount of money?
Dan, what do you know about this one?
I mean, I wasn't involved in the selection of the RFP, but I can say my experience has been with the air monitoring. It's usually a relatively small amount for total project cost, and it kind of, it's hard to handle. Give me two guys.
Okay, Mike's gonna go check and get the information that we have on the.
Yeah, that ought to be helpfully consistent.
Why, why we, why we chose this company out of the eleven that made proposals to do this for us?
There's, there should be money involved, and we authorized it.
There will, we have to pay them, but we don't know how much the total amount's gonna be.
So that should be in there, right?
It should what?
That should be in there.
It should be in here?
Yeah, we should put that in there, yeah.
Yeah, that's what we're trying to find out. We're trying to get that information.
That's fine. Here's our quick note, the golf commission meetings. Uh, revenue was up, Mayor, uh, from last July to this July, the revenue was up thirty-three thousand. They took in a hundred and twenty-eight thousand last month, compared to ninety-eight, uh, ninety, ninety-four, ninety-eight and change last year at this time. The amount of play is increased, all use of the golf carts, the sixty blue golf carts, have basically have gone out every day so far. And there's over five thousand rounds of golf being played up there. And I'm sure he gave you the update on the, okay. And as far as everything else is concerned, we have to just go over a few little nicks and nacks with the mega's contract, because there was an issue of, uh, there's so many parties up there now, Mayor, and, uh, there's so many tournaments being played up there. And when the new golf course is being built, and the old one, uh, the old pavilion, they were discussing which one goes up to the new clubhouse, which goes to pavilion, which one the golfers get. So that's something they want to discuss, okay?
Right, it's, it's, it's the golfer's clubhouse during the golf season.
You're right, see, that, that was the whole issue we were talking about.
But we've talked about it, but I agree, we should, we should clear that up, if there's any questions on anybody's part.
Very good. Now, and that was, now that, but, I, I just wanted to get the numbers out for, for all of you.
The play has been outstanding, I mean, it's a twenty-nine percent increase over last year. The new model of charging per greens fees instead of the, uh, traditional membership is serving not.
Is working.
Right, is working, and, um, the new cards have helped.
And they took in, uh, new memberships, they took in, uh, over a thousand dollars in membership, they took in, and they have junior members, oh. And they take, they took in, uh, nine hundred dollars with the golf. The driving range.
Really?
It's taken in over nine, I know. It's taken in around nine hundred.
No, we saw on the audit, the beverage cart, twenty-two thousand dollars, have we talked about that, or was that the budget?
Beverage cart, we bought.
The twenty-two thousand, yeah.
She pays for the lease. She pays for that.
I agree with that.
Or she pays us, but we, in other words, we bought a cart.
Okay.
With the payment on it, Megan makes, she makes that payment.
Okay.
That's how that works.
So this is all you've got? That's all, that's all I saw, I did not see.
Okay, yeah, cause it just was like, whoa, twenty-two thousand dollars.
But she pays for.
Yeah, but she's gonna end up paying that, yeah.
She pays for that, not us.
Okay. So that makes sense why we're not, like, why we didn't have it in front of us?
That was prior to agreement.
Yeah.
You can, yeah, I don't think it's, I, I don't think there's any. If you wanna keep discussing with, uh, I'll get, try and get Nick on the phone, because this really doesn't answer the question.
Well, I was just talking to Mr. Clark about is.
You're not gonna kill me.
It doesn't appear that there's any imminent deadline that we're facing, so we can always table this.
So that's what I don't know.
Get additional information from Nick, uh, Zabowski, and then re-present this at the next.
They are hourly, they are hourly agreement proposals. I numbers.
Yeah, he's not answering. Uh, yeah, it's, it's, again, it's a contingency bid based upon the number of hours. We don't have an hourly rate printed on here, but there were eleven firms that responded. And he instructed the bidders to email him PDFs of their proposal. I've received proposals from the firms on the attached list, and I'm not sure why he presented this, uh, on the agenda, the resolution, without a number. So if you want to withdraw it, I guess we can.
Yeah, let me, well, let me.
Yeah, should do a vote?
Between withdrawing and tabling, let me make the suggestion to withdraw it, because I'm anticipating that we're gonna need to make some changes to it. So if we table it, then it's gonna have to come back the way it is, and then you would have to make a motion to modify it down the road. Just be cleaner to withdraw it and re-put that in the resolution.
Yeah, I, I, the only, I'm not, I, that's why I'm questioning, we have a grant, and there may be requirements of the grant to, to get this resolution passed, but I don't know what they are.
I see, I see, now wish you, that's not gonna hold anything up.
Okay, then we'll do that, okay?
So does that get withdrawn during the meeting, or prior?
We'll make a motion to withdraw at the meeting. So we'll still adopt the agenda, then we'll get the legislation, and we're just gonna make a motion to withdraw that.
Sounds good.
Please.
Absolutely.
So a little bit before five fifty-five?
Yeah, I know the Recreation Commission, during the summer, they have not really had meetings, they haven't had people being able to go to the meetings, but they've been very busy with all their work, hiring people and managing the parks and things.
An update on the, the park in East End, the Veronzo.
Yes, Veronzo area.
Thank you for the picnic tables.
Don't thank me, you guys are.
They're, they're, and that park is used every day, every night. And it's been a pleasure to have, um, to watch those kids in there. And now even on the weekend, they've been having picnics in there. And the girl that I work there.
Yes.
Did a great job, and, uh.
We got a report from her.
Did you?
We got two reports, beginning and the end of the year, and yeah, um, she's very, very.
I, I felt it was a success, and they did a great job down there, everybody.
Will you have a grand opening ribbon cutting planned, uh, I think it's next week?
Wednesday.
Wednesday.
April twenty-seven, three o'clock.
And, uh, you know, we did invite council, please come, uh, it's, uh, it's the high time we thank, you know, the people, uh, like Congressman Tomko, the Rouse, who are very generous, and of course, uh, Centro Civico Ibero, uh, so they'll be on hand as well. But it's, it's a great, great thing, Jimmy, I'd like, I go by there, I just, I just love seeing it.
Yeah, I go by there at least a lot of times.
Yeah, you do, more than I do.
I'm more angry when I see it, and it's a pleasure to watch those kids, I need that bucket of water.
That's a great splashback.
So we got a five fifty-five public hearing, which we'll call to order on ordinance F, um, to be known as ordinance five, or whatever number it's gonna be. Uh, this is to modify city code, add a loading zone sign, uh, on the east side of Locust Avenue in front of three-seventeen Locust Avenue. So if there's anyone here for the, to be heard on that public hearing, on that issue, please approach. Okay, there's not, so we'll continue. Uh, we'll close that public hearing, stay. And, uh, we've got five minutes to go, and Mike Clark is sitting over there.
He has Mike's report, or?
We usually do the engineering report at this point.
Charlie?
Hi, Mike, yep, you're, uh.
Hey, thank you, Mayor. As everybody is aware, the golf course clubhouse project is still going full speed. Making great progress, we're getting very near to the end, concrete slab work is done. Doors will be in, all the doors will be in this week. The finished carpentry work continues, HVAC installation is a massive undertaking, and they're well into it. Electrical is nearly complete, site work is gonna begin the end of this week, and be done next week with, uh, obviously, final paving, one of the last things that are done along with topsoil, and seating. But they are making very good progress, and if anybody wants to see it, and see the progress, of course, contact me or contact me, and we'll certainly walk you through it. Paving program, Del Segna is mobilizing for Market Street work and, uh, the alternate work, they're gonna do it concurrently. They're gonna begin on some smaller secondary streets that are alternates, and, uh, begin with, all, at the same time, with all the rebuilds on the manholes and the cash basins on Market Street. They're, they're, given the fact that the, the, the traffic is heavy, we've worked out a good, uh, maybe it's a traffic plan with the chief of police, myself, contractor, and I've got DOT involved also. They're going to have their staging area, and, and that vacant lot where the two brick houses were demoed, just on the other side from, uh, what is that? It's not Friday.
The drugstore.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that work is gonna be going, you'll see messages on, uh, on the big message board, it should be on today or tomorrow morning, on the permanent one, coming on throughway that says, uh, Route thirty, Market Street, paving to begin, uh, August twenty-fifth, seek alternate routes, that kind of caution. We know that, you know, all, all the folks that are local to Amsterdam, or as soon as we start, are gonna zip around that and, and take their own alternate routes. But we're still gonna have plenty of traffic to contend with, uh, through all the, the northbound, southbound traffic, um, that are going elsewhere. Uh, also, briefly, a member of the contractor and our, uh, inspector for the Crescent Avenue Bridge, we are on track that, again, as I mentioned previously, we're gonna close that bridge, uh, right around Halloween, and, and October, obviously, and demolish and install the pile foundations this fall, early winter, and concrete, and then the rest of the bridge will be completed in the spring to the beginning of summer. The boardwalk project is going, actually going very well. Uh, the majority of the piles are in, anybody that's been on the south side, near the pedestrian bridge, you can see it. It's really starting to take shape now, I invite anybody to swing over the pedestrian bridge, or stop at the one side and take a look at it, it's, it's, it really looks impressive. And I'll certainly take any and all questions.
Any questions for the engineer? Okay, I'll call a meeting to order. Please stand for the pleasure of the evening.
My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, one God, in this world, liberty, and justice for all.
Alderwoman Questa Mars, here. Alderman Holiday.
Here.
Alderwoman Collins. Alderman Marticello.
Here.
Alderman Carpenter.
Could I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I make a motion to adopt the agenda with eight resolutions, um, two ordinances to be voted on, and two ordinance introductions.
And let's just, including the introduction of ordinance H, please.
Yes, so that'll be the two introductions, right?
Thank you.
Okay, yep. Alderwoman Questa Mars.
Hi.
Alderman Holiday.
Hi.
Alderwoman Collins.
Hi.
Alderman Marticello.
Hi.
We have no proclamations this evening, we do have one in the form of a resolution, which we'll read later on. Communications and presentations. All right, at this point, we're here for public participation, anybody in the audience who'd like to speak, this first podium. State your name, address, you have five minutes to.
John R. Shepherd, from Eighteen Oster Street. Mayor, we haven't talked about water meters in a while, and, uh, this year we got an election coming up. And I think that could be, if, if, if it's not too late, that we could actually vote, in other words, the people could vote on it. There's no guarantee from year to year, we're gonna have an abundance of water. We have climate change, and, and you can look at the wildlife, you can find more four-legged deer in the city of Amsterdam than, you know, as far as the record is concerned, because the wildlife is, uh, looking for water, and, and, and the climate is changing. And, uh, I, I believe that this should be voted on, but the people to get a little bit more knowledge, and, and hopefully, we. and, and hopefully we'd be able to vote on this in November, because I, I'm in favor of water meters and, uh, you know, people, they, they waste a lot of water putting on like 2:00 in the afternoon when it's 90 degrees out, which, which is supposed to water, uh, the grass when the sun comes down, you know, so I mean, anyway, this, this is, this is something that we have to, we have to really consider and, and get the people informed, hopefully voted on. Another thing is, I've been watching some things on, uh, uh, the climate as it is and, and when we put food waste in a landfill, it decomposes and becomes methane gas, which, which in turn is, uh, warming the planet. Now, a lot of people think sooner or later we're going to have to do away with, uh, landfills, the plastic and stuff, there's companies that take this plastic and glass and they break it down and use it for other things. When Anne Thane was mayor, we took the old Mohasko site, we put plastics on one area, glass on another area, we could sell the things and, and make, and get some money. Now it's, uh, now I don't, I don't know what's going on with that and, uh, but it's something, it's something that's going to be, has to be looked into because methane gas is, uh, causing the climate to change. Uh, another thing is, uh, Mayor, I don't know if you talked to the mayor in Hegeman, they, they had an election in November, there's a Robin Ritchie, R-I-C-C-I. And, uh, she got elected, I think she's new to the position. If you go to Hegeman, a lot of people going through stop signs there. I frequently go on Chuckanunda, uh, street and at the corner of Chuckanunda and Fowler Street, which would be where half Avery's garage was, I don't think it's in existence anymore, the people go through the stop sign pretty quick. I'm not talking about the stop sign that's really right on Chuckanunda Street, it's, it's like across the street from there, there's a pole and I was told that there's actually three stop signs on a pole and the people go right through it. Now, like, I, like, I only bring this up, I know we don't really have any authority on it, but I thought maybe if you talked to the mayor in Hegeman, because other people told me that they have other areas in Hegeman where people just disregard and go through the stop signs and, uh, and I had stopped on Chuckanunda, went, went through and, and somebody went real quick, now if you go, if you go past, you're heading into the town of Perth, if you take a left, then you head up towards Cronies and, you know, like that. But, uh, uh, you know, so I, I was just wondering if you, if you could, uh, talk to their mayor and, uh, see that there's a problem, because I'm sure that people from Hegeman, I mean, or from Amsterdam do go to Hegeman once in a while and it would be...
I'm sure she'd love to hear from me, Jeff.
Huh?
I'm sure she'd love to hear from me.
Yeah, yeah, well, don't mention my name, I think we're cousins, anyway, you know, so I mean, uh, so, uh, uh, you know, but I, I think that would be nice to do that anyway, you know, to help out, see what's going on, because I think that, uh, it could, could be a problem. Another thing is, uh, we'll just throw this in, I, I was very happy with that, uh, the, what do you call it, Creek Way, uh, you had that...
Creek Fest.
In the, uh...
Creek Fest, right.
Yeah, Creek Fest, I, I evidently, I was very successful, I knew that it was the first time we had that, it's good that we utilized the land and, uh, so I thought that was a pretty good thing that we had that over there.
It was.
Okay.
Thank you, Jeff. Anyone else tonight? Okay, uh, so we are...
With that, I'll make a motion to go into executive session.
This would be pursuant to Public Officers Law, Section 105, Sub 1, Sub F, regarding the medical financial credit or employment history of particular person or corporation or manager, meaning to be employed, employed, demoted, disc or suspension, dismissal or removal of particular person or corporation.
All right, any discussion? You can call the roll. Alderwoman Questamars.
Hi.
Alderman Holliday.
Hi.
Alderwoman Collins. Alderman Marticello.
Hi.
Thank you, this will be, uh, not too long, I'm sure.
I just offer one thing on my way out, as a professional, if you needed any help with the deer he's talking about, just, uh, yeah, I'm right here. Okay, professional.